Sue.
Hi, Jeff Stocker. I know you probably don't remember me. We lived across the street from you on 39th Street. Yeah, down in Point Township. We were in the whites with blue shutters. I don't know what color it is now, but like, so my wife's sharp redhead.
Oh, okay.
And then my kids are redheads. Yeah, I was barely ever home because I was working up in Cleveland. Exactly. Yeah, exactly. Duke, right? Hey, Jeff, good to see you, man. Yeah. I am. I am. But that's why, yeah.
I see Sharon.
I've always been around in town as much as her. So, yeah. It's nice to see you.
Yeah.
Jeff Stocker. Good to meet you, man. I appreciate your, uh, more. I do. I do.
Yes.
But I didn't see what they did.
So, is Sherry coming?
I really don't know.
I went to the line and we were giving things.
That was a lot of fun.
Oh, thirteen years.
Yeah.
You know, that's what I like.
Yeah.
Haven't seen you in a while.
Very glad. How are you?
Good. I'm good.
How's Sherry? Is she keeping you going? Keeping you on your toes?
No, I know. She's been busy cleaning my house. Getting ready for Thanksgiving.
The grandkids destroy it?
No, just getting ready for Thanksgiving.
Are you guys having everybody over for Thanksgiving? Somebody have to do like creatively move the tables around to get everybody to fit? Or you throw all the kids in another room?
Yeah, we, uh, basically we finished the day.
Okay, that works. Lots of space.
Fit eighteen people, so. And if I never spill over, they can go in the other room.
Is everybody coming then or? It's nice because it seems like sometimes somebody has to go here instead of here or whatever. It's nice when everybody can get together.
Well, I know we always do Thanksgiving brunch at eight thirty, so they all.
Come over for breakfast.
Now, Sherry wants to have lunch or dinner sometime. I went back to it and said, you know, they have other places.
Yeah, it makes it difficult.
Like the show. Because of the family, they go to a big thing down.
Oh, you are? For what you put on YouTube? You didn't bring Sherry on? She's running her out. She's running her out.
She's, uh, she's pretty well in for the night. She, I mean, she put in a pretty hard.
Did she?
Cleaning up everything. And she's trying to, uh, she's been working on this needlepoint thing for like two years now. I mean, it's really, it's really complicated. So she thought she'd do it this year. Now she thinks probably won't be so many days.
There's always next year. Yes. Camera. Sherry is so high.
How are you doing?
He just comes because he likes to share.
I've seen you for a long time.
Yeah, I've been hiding now.
So have I. I haven't been here for a year, but I'm gonna speak tonight. Sure, please. How do you feel?
Good.
Looking good.
Last time I was here, there was a little pop on the other side. Two closets. That's a ridiculous place. Yeah. I guess they didn't hear of the COVID emergencies. What about, like, just the thing to make the contact? If that wasn't passed before the end of November, would you come to have to start that? Last week, I was seeing state office, taxi kids on eighteen, seeing citizens that don't have. How are you doing?
We've had speaking rooms a couple times in this city.
Intentionally.
And I've been like open meetings on the highest school because if there's nothing on the agenda about this. You know, where there's special person, there's a person who's about in cities, it's a community. In short time, concerned with trouble with the poles, what you're saying.
Good point. But they can probably excuse those problems which kind of, right?
Yeah.
And then, and then.
Now called order the city council meeting of November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, time is seven P M. Ben, would you please call the roll? Uh, opening, oh, sorry.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we are here tonight to discuss topics that will benefit our constituents and the North Camp community as a whole. Come, give us wisdom to make the right decisions. Let us not make biased decisions, but decisions based on solving the problems of your children. Be our leader during this meeting. Give us direction to make the right decision for North Camp. Open our eyes to solutions and help us make a community great for all who call home. Amen.
Let us pray. To the flag of the United States of America and to the motherland for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a breathing justice for all.
I do want to make a note that this is not going to be livestreamed tonight, just moved, but it will be recorded and posted online tomorrow. Okay, Ben, would you please call the roll? Member Schrein?
Here.
Member Waring?
Here.
Member Lyra?
Here.
Member McLeister?
Here.
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member Orr?
Here.
Member Vol?
Here.
Seven brothers. Okay, for your consideration, kind of motion and a second to approve as presented minutes from October twenty-third, committee and council. Minutes from October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, the October twenty twenty-three finance report and town officials updates to chapter nine fifty-nine. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Question carries. Okay, at this time, Fitch and Associates is invited to the podium to give their presentation, the assessment of the North Camp fire.
Uh, good evening, mayor members of council. Thanks for having us tonight. My name is B.J. Jungman. I'm a senior consultant with Fitch and Associates. I also have one colleague, Dr. Bruce Muller. So, uh, we've been fortunate to work with your city and your fire department to conduct a, uh, an assessment, uh, over the past number of months. And we're here to present, uh, the findings of our, our study. Do you need to pick up the microphone? Is that better? Is that better, folks? All right. Sounds good. Uh, so if you're going to ask any questions, we go along. Uh, so we'll review the data that we had and the observations and recommendations, uh, contained within the report. So when you look back to twenty twenty-two was the last full calendar year we had, uh, we looked at the number of, of calls, uh, that the department ran. And based on by program area, uh, you can see that the majority of your EMS calls are, are most of your, uh, your, uh, fire calls or calls for service are in the EMS program at twenty-eight fifty-six. Uh, your second busiest is your fire program and then diminishes as we go down. Uh, the second or third column versus number of responses, so that's a number of vehicle movements. So you may have one, one call for service and you may need to send more than one unit to that call. The difference between the number of calls and the number of responses is the number of calls is every time someone calls down and wants the fire department to respond for whatever, uh, emergency it might be. The number of responses is vehicle movements. So when you look, you have, um, in your EMS program, two point one responses per call. So you're generally sending at least two units to every EMS call and at least four units to every fire call. Then we go over in the middle of the, the chart there, we talk about total time on task. And, uh, this is the amount of hours that, uh, that unit is tied up from the time of the call until, uh, the time they were cleared from that incident and available for the next incident. So. So in twenty twenty-two, your total time on task was four thousand two hundred fifty-three hours. Um, and then you look it over with responsive time data. Uh, sometimes you don't have all of your units have every timestamp, so we exclude those. Uh, and then your average busy minutes per call. So each EMS call takes a little over a half hour to complete and ties up the units for that long. Fire calls about twenty-five minutes, and your, uh, has meant calls are a little bit longer. We look at that by average calls per day and then the average responses per day. So that's kind of a high-level overview of what's happening in the department program. When you look at it by incident, uh, like many communities in the country, about eighty percent of your call volume is EMS when you're a fire-based ambulance service, uh, that is what we are seeing. It is a growing trend of EMS calls. Communities have a higher demand for service, followed by their EMS pro, or their fire program and then other types of calls. We do a temporal analysis to see when these calls are coming in, to see if there's a dynamic staffing pattern here that would be more applicable. And when you look at it, we look at it by day, a week, a month, a year. And when you look at it, you don't have a ton of variation. You go from eight point seven on Sundays to ten point seven on Tuesdays. It's not enough of a call variation to change your staffing patterns. Same thing by month. You go from eight point one in February to twelve point oh, uh, calls per day in August. Again, not enough to, to make a huge difference, but there are some communities that do experience things like, uh, have a heavy tourism industry where it's seasonal. Uh, we don't see that here. We also look at it by, uh, time of day, and this can be replicated in many communities across the country, is that your busiest hours are generally your waking hours from about eight A M. until nine P M. So that's when the majority of the calls are from A M. Yes, you do have calls overnight, but the majority of them aren't from eight A M. and nine P M. So when you look at your units and how many hours, uh, they were tied up or busy on calls during the calendar year twenty twenty-two, so you can see your, your fire apparatus on the left side there, your engines, your ladder, and then your medic two is your busiest with, uh, about two hundred and twenty hours, followed by your medic five. Then we start getting into your response times, and we again break it up by program to see if there's a difference, to see what might be causing that difference, and then compare it. Uh, so when you look at your programs here, your, uh, the first column is the dispatch time, so that's the time from when someone calls nine-one, and so the fire department is alerted of that call. So that's the dispatch time. The turnout time is from when the fire department is alerted from that call, and so a unit starts driving towards that call. That's called the turnout time. And then the travel time is from the time they leave the fire station and they arrive at the curb of whatever address. And then the total response time isn't that, that, uh, last column on the right, or second to last column on the right. So for your EMS response time, you're at seven and a half minutes on average. Your fire response time, you're at eight point three, and if you go down to the bottom, the aggregate is seven point nine. We also do this by the ninetieth percentile. So an average is kind of a coin flip. So half your residents would experience a seven and a, almost an eight-minute response time, uh, or less, and the other half would experience an eight-minute response time or longer. That doesn't really give us an indication of reliability, but ninetieth percentile says nine times out of the ten calls that come in for service, a resident is going to experience this service or better. So a, a, a measure of reliability. And again, we have the same columns, the same programs here. Um, when you look at it, the total, uh, ninetieth percentile response time on EMS is ten minutes, on fires thirteen, at an aggregate here at twelve point eight. So, um, I'll, I'll show you some comparables here. Uh, if you look at this, the, the top column or top row, there's what your current average is. Again, you're at seven minutes fifty-four seconds total. And then your ninetieth percentile, you're at twelve minutes and forty-eight. Uh, CFAI is the Center for Fire Accreditation International. Uh, their, their ninetieth percentile is seven minutes and forty seconds, forty-six seconds for suburban agency. Then you get in the NFPA, which is National Fire Protection Association, the seventeen-ten standard. They would tell you it's six minutes and twenty-four seconds when you add in dispatch processing, turnout, travel time. And that's for career departments that are primarily staffed by all career members. The NFPA seventeen-twenty is for primarily all volunteer departments, and they would tell you it's within ten minutes and four seconds for the ninetieth percentile.
Does that take care of both stations?
Yes, this is inclusive of both stations.
Okay.
We also looked at, um, how often do you have, uh, simultaneous calls going on? Because that's a, a measure of how much depth do you have, right? So if more than one call's going, how many do you have one or one crew available? And so when you look at it, you're at about thirty percent of the times, so three out of ten times, when one call happens, a second call is going to happen. So it's not infrequent that that happens. When you're running ten calls a day, every day you're going to have a couple of calls that overlap, and so one crew probably is not sufficient to cover this in, uh, for all the calls for service. We looked at your EMS and we looked at your transports. Um, again, you can see some variations by month, uh, the number of, of, uh, transports per day. Uh, you can also see they're slowly rising. But you, you basically average, in your low month back in twenty twenty, in April, you were, uh, just under three transports a day. Uh, when you look at twenty twenty-two, you're really pretty consistent between, uh, four and five and a half, six transports a day on average. Now we start getting into some of our observations and recommendations. Uh, one thing we, we noted is that there was no reported mutual aid or auto aid agreements for ambulances.
Say again, there's no reported.
Mutual aid or auto aid. So, uh, it's our understanding that there's any formalized agreements with the neighboring agencies for the emergency medical services. So you do have those multiple calls, because it may not stop at two calls. It could have three, four, or five or major incident. We do think it's important to make sure that the mutual aid and auto aid agreements are in place so that you can get those resources and keep. Sounds like it happens informally, but it's always good to solidify those standards. Switching gears on you, uh, looking at the Fire Prevention Division, the inspections piece, there's, we have seven hundred and, seven hundred and fifty inspectable buildings in the city, six of those are schools, three are hospitals. You have approximately three inspections per day over two hundred and sixty workable days to accomplish those. Uh, really, one inspector should be able to accomplish those goals, and, uh, you would have to account for plan review and pre-construction and things like that. So we, we focused on the biggest workload, which is the inspectable buildings. We didn't focus a ton on, uh, the plan reviews and new things coming into town, permits and things like that. We'll talk about that in a minute here. Uh, currently, firefighter paramedics are used to complete those inspections. Moving forward, we think you'd be best served if you use those roles as, as standalone fire inspectors to complete the inspections and outsourcing the plan review. Uh, there's private services that can probably do a good plan review and have the expertise in that. And then repurpose those firefighter paramedics to primarily respond to them where it's using more popular equipment or about the operational staff in here in a minute. When you look at your apparatus, uh, you currently have four engines, one ladder, a rescue truck, four medic or ambulances, and one supervisor here. We want to present an option to you, members of the report, that you could use some, uh, multi-purpose resources. You could reduce an engine and a rescue and repurpose one of your engines as an engine-rescue combination. So reduce two of your heavy apparatus that you currently have. There's also an opportunity when you replace your ladder to, to replace it with what's called a quintet, is a combination of an engine and a ladder, based on the risk we see that would be appropriate. So we're going to dive a little bit into the G I S, a little bit of the drive time analysis. So when we look at this, we use what's called a marginal utility model, and it, it really helps you understand what your rate of return is for investing in fixed facilities to, to be able to cover, uh, the call frequency. So basically, this is a simulation in G I S. that takes all those calls for service and the available units and says, how quick can we get there and what percentage of the calls? So in this case, we take your current two stations and we say, in four minutes, how quick can we get there? And when we run that scenario, um, your station one can cover the majority of the calls with eighty-four point two four percent with travel time. So remember, that's not inclusive of dispatcher turnout, but the travel time. So we're specifically talking about that in the time segment right now. Adding your current station two location really only gets you another seventy-four calls that you can reach within four minutes. So about a half a percent, just shy of a half a percent of additional coverage with that current station two. So you, you don't have a great spread between your two stations, so it doesn't give you a lot more coverage. If we expand that up to seven minutes, so if we were to elongate our acceptable travel time, uh, your station one could cover ninety-eight percent of the calls with one station. And really, your station two can't cover anything that isn't covered with your station at seven minutes. So then we wipe the board clean and we say, what's the optimized location? If nothing was a barrier at this point, we're not talking land, we're not talking anything other than a road number and the call line. If those were the only two variables in here, what would be the best place to put a fire station that captured the most amount of calls in six-minute drive time? And basically, the center of your city is what it would say, uh, is the best location if you're a white slate theme. Now, in a built-up city, that's not realistic, but it gives you an idea when you start to think about modeling for the future. We also took, uh, based on some proposed or available program within the city of what would it look like if we put a station at, at this property and did a six-minute drive time, and that would be a ninety-five point one percent. So just shy of ninety-six percent, which really, when you build a system, if you can get to the ninetieth percentile, you're doing good. You won't generally build a system to a hundred percent, because it gets very costly, but ninety-plus percent reliability is a good way to model your system. So if you, if you were to choose to put a fire station here, um, and you had a six-minute response time for a travel time, uh, you could cover ninety-five percent of your calls from there. This is just a heat map, uh, of all of your calls from twenty twenty-two and, uh, where, where they land. Obviously, the, the yellow and red are where you have multiple calls in that same area. I'm sure everybody will start to try to think of addresses in those areas or what's sitting there, exactly what happens. Uh, we also look at urban versus rural, and really, your entire city is encapsulated by an urban, uh, environment. So we look for urban response time, which is what we were comparing to earlier. Sometimes you have cities that have a mixed urban and rural response, so you, you make the program fit that. You can generally have a little bit longer response time that's acceptable in a rural area than in a urban area. So let me, we start to look at our demand versus our staffing, and really what we do is we say, if we staff three units twenty-four-seven, um, what would that look like? So that's the red bar. That says there's three units available. If we go back down to the bottom baseline, you see the green bars there. That's the call volume, and this is basically an hour a day by every day of the week over the year. And then we take that margin in between, kind of that light purple shading, uh, is what we need to cover in geography. So we need the two units available because we have multiple calls going on, and we need to have somebody available for that call. So if you were to staff three of your fire stations, or three, three units in your fire station, you would not exceed what your staffing is, again, outside of extraordinary circumstances, which can happen, but on day-to-day operations with a four-minute travel time, you'd be able to, to cover those calls. If it went to a six-minute drive time, you can see that the kind of shaded area above the green there, that reduces because we've now elongated our travel time from four minutes to six minutes. So we're not as close to what our, our, uh, acceptable response time is. So again, a single station would provide you ninety percent coverage for all of your incidents between five and eight-minute travel time, no matter which scenario we, we ran. So when we look at staffing, uh, you have a combination model with full-time and part-time staff currently. Really, from what we could understand is there's really no part-time schedule or minimum hours per month. And the part-time staff, staff can come in without approval or need, so it's not a regular system at this point. It's more of a staff availability system at this point. Um, and with, uh, the staff that's in the bid process, the process makes it challenging to engage all part-time staff if they were bid shifts. And if you think about that, that's a common challenge that we see across the country because the majority of your part-time staff are available evenings and weekends. Uh, and when you look at when the majority of your call volume is, is during a labor week, uh, when a lot of your workforce is at their full-time job. So it's, it's not uncommon. So if you were to continue with the part-time call response model, we think that there should be an expectation for part-time responders, and that should set a shift schedule and policies for the part-time staff to make sure that they are held accountable for those. Uh, your part-time program costs, currently there's twenty-seven staff in it, and their hours for the year range from seventeen and a half to twenty-five hundred and forty-seven. And that's just your part-time, not your career staff. The average was thirteen hundred and fifty hours per part-time staff. Their average earnings were twelve thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars. That doesn't include training or anything. That is just strictly, uh, salary costs. And the total cost of the program is about three hundred and twenty-nine thousand. A couple of payroll pressures from the notable, from the full-time side is the average overtime of your full-time firefighters currently, because they get called back, uh, many times, particularly for fire calls, is an average earning of twenty thousand four hundred and thirty-three. And then contractually, you're obligated to pay an additional, uh, amount on Sundays. Each firefighter averages ten thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars on their Sunday payday. So just some pressures to be aware of. Looking at the full-time model, you need to, when you're, when you're thinking about filling, uh, a unit for twenty-four-seven, if you need two people on that unit, you can't just staff two people because people get sick, they take vacation time, things like that. So when we look at the benefit time that your career staff have, and we, we run the historical numbers of that, you need three point three one F T Es per twenty-four-hour shift. So if you were going to have two people on an apparatus, you would need six point six two F T Es. Now, obviously, it's difficult to hire the point six two, so we generally tell you to either pay overtime for that or to hire the additional F T E needed to, to the seventh F T E. But it's an important factor to, uh, plan for because unlike your, your normal forty-hour week staff, trying to make sure that you have a minimum coverage is important in our readiness model with the fire service. Currently, you have five full-time staff assigned per shift with a minimum of four. So you can staff two to three units depending on how many people are there and if there's any part-time staff. Most of the time, you're staffing two units with your full-time staff. When you look at this, this is really what we see, uh, continuum of staffing models in fire service, anywhere from volunteer all the way down to career. Currently, you're kind of sitting in that combination model right above the, the career, uh, box there. We think that there's a best practice staffing model for you out there, and that would be to staff a third unit with a minimum of two people twenty-four-seven. That would allow you to have two ambulances staffed twenty-four-seven and one engine cross-staffed with an ambulance when needed, and then again, engage the neighboring agencies for that auto aid or mutual aid agreement. So we think that that would be the best practice to make sure that, that North Canton has a reliable model with the resources you have. It would increase your shift staffing to seven per shift. So currently, you have five. That would be adding two additional staffs per twenty-four-hour shift, and there's generally three shifts, uh, to cover twenty-four-seven. You may need to increase that with your tenure, uh, as additional benefit time is accrued. When you have new staff, they have less vacation and sick time, and as they get more tenure, that, that goes up and the use fills up. So if you were to, to go to an all-career department, you could save the three hundred and twenty-nine thousand from your part-time program. And again, that's just salary costs. That's not, you, you generally have high turnover, costs a lot to train all those folks on their new, more equipment, things like that. You would have some opportunities that probably have some operational savings in there. And the cost per firefighter, salary-wise, is seventy-three thousand three hundred. So it would cost you five hundred and thirteen thousand to increase your shifts to seven. Uh, that net increase would be a hundred and eighty-four thousand. So if you were to strictly go to that best practice model. So rolling into our recommendations, uh, we think that setting your shift minimums to, to six per week are the ideal to monitor your part-time staff turnout and make sure that, uh, if you do keep the program, there are minimums established, and make sure that it is serving you well for the investment you're making. And continue to encourage your part-time staff to work shifts with career staff. Again, that allows them to get some additional competencies. From an administrative structure standpoint, we think that, uh, the chief officers should be restructured, and they should both be assistant chiefs. Currently, your career, uh, you have a fire chief and a career battalion chief and a volunteer paid-on-call assistant chief. We think they should both be, uh, assistant chiefs. We think they should both be assistant chiefs. From a data standpoint, we think that there's some opportunities to work with your dispatch center to make sure that the information is flowing directly from the dispatch center into the fire department records management system. And to better utilize the records management system because that'll provide you more rich data to better inform your decisions moving forward. We think that they can implement an electronic system. As you add career staff, it gets more complex, and there's a lot of great systems that ease the administrative burden. And then we also think they should capture some risk information during inspections of pre-plans when they're out in buildings, capturing things like current contacts, so if we do have an emergency at 2:00 AM in an apartment building or business, we have those things available to us. Operationally, we think they should set alarm assignments based on risk and critical tasking, and determine the callback based on the need and time on task. Currently, it's any fire call gets a callback for everybody, whether that's a fire alarm or a structured fire. And we think there's a better way to set up the alarm assignments that would serve the community better and allow your folks to have a better, really, work-life balance. Determine the appropriate wins to respond to each incident. Currently, that's not scripted, it's up to the staff that are there that day. So you could have essentially the same call, go out and get a different response day by day. So some more structure to that. And again, there, we talked about this already, about establishing the use of mutually and auto weight for larger incidents and multiple calls, using your neighboring agencies when needed and then reciprocating. Integrated response, we think consolidating to a single fixed facility would be a wise way to go. As the funding becomes available, we think that you could invest in a single fixed facility and truly establish an integrated fire-based EMS response system, make sure everybody's cross-trained between fire and EMS. And again, you could also reduce the frequency of sending both a large fire apparatus and an ambulance to many of your lower-acute medicals, going back to the alarm assignment piece of matching risk to response. There was some talk about maybe, should we charge nursing homes for lift assistance calls? Because lots of times departments consider that because there are paid healthcare staff there. And if someone fell out of bed or fell in the bathroom, shouldn't they either want to pick them up? Many departments have contemplated this, some have implemented it, so we just kind of throw it a throw-in con. If you were excited to go down that route, consider. From the pro standpoint, you're trying to curb those unnecessary calls for service that really are not emergency calls for service, and you charge for a level of service that's gradually provided by the facility. What I would tell you, the con-con from our perspective, is usually it's billed back to the patient. Even though you build a facility, they will generally bill the patient directly back. And it does not always change the staffing or behavior of the facility. Lots of times, they're doing this for a reason, whether that's liability or staff resources. It can also increase the complaints by families who get charged, it's not covered by Medicare, and it's an additional administrative process that the department would have to take on. Recommendations for the prevention front, again, establish a cycle based on occupancy risk to make sure we're getting into all the buildings. A lot of departments saw kind of a pause with COVID, and now that we're kind of getting back to normalcy, making sure to re-engage and have an adopted inspection cycle. And that inspection cycle is followed, and again, collect that previous planning information. So if you do have an emergency there, you're prepared to respond and have all the information at your fireworks and your tips. Alluded to this earlier, but use a single role inspector. Usually, you can pay around seventy-five percent of the dual role staff, which would be about sixty-six thousand to have a single role fire inspector. So they wouldn't necessarily be in the fire EMS operation dedicated to giving inspections. And use a contractor to conduct your plan reviews. And again, lots of times, you can pass that fee along to the applicant. There's a lot of local fire engineering firms in many states that do this kind of work, so something to maybe explore. Another thing considered was false fire alarm fee ordinances. Again, economic disincentives can be helpful in curbing some behavior and making these false alarms and nuisance alarms mitigated. Because really, there's a risk if you continue to have false alarms at a facility, people become complacent. And then when the actual incident occurs, they become complacent and don't get out, and the fire alarm goes off. So there is a safety benefit as well as an economic benefit to the facility to get it figured out. So a lot of places do two free false alarms per year and then escalate the fee for every false alarm beyond the third. The Fire Prevention Division would follow up on any unreliable alarm systems. Both Dayton and Oakland, Ohio have working systems similar to that. Fire inspection fees, some considers as an additional diversification of revenue. I can tell you that not many departments charge for annual fire inspections unless they're a licensed facility. If they have a license to a facility to operate for some reason, then they sometimes are charged. But just to charge all of your expectable properties is not a common practice. If you were to do that, we would say it should be on square footage because your local convenience stores are going to take as long as your big industrial facility. So making sure that there's a scalability of the fee. So if you average it to a hundred dollars per facility, that'd give you about eighty thousand dollars in revenue per year. And again, you have to accommodate for the administrative process of the fee. So with that, I will stand for any questions. I will say that I appreciate the collaboration that our department worked with you on this. And I appreciate the analysis that you presented and the period of discussion that we've come out with. But again, I thank you especially for our fire department, for their helpfulness and the analysis and how we can provide our service better, especially our fire and the response. And I will say thank you very much for you and your association. And thank you for the presentation here to the audience. Thank you. Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman.
Quick question for you. When we were looking at our staffing, if you were to look at our part-time and retention prevention costs of district officials, related to hiring and retaining staff, would we be typical in terms of a ratio of retention higher or lower as you look at other departments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we didn't actually get your turnover data, that was a generic. Most part-time and paid-on-call programs do see a turnover, and we're seeing most new folks last, less than, on average, less than five years. And it tips you a year, year and a half of training in many cases. So I don't, we weren't actually able to obtain the data for your...
And that goes to your recommendation for your overall job and data.
Correct, so the staffing data.
Would you have an estimate or a recommendation of a typical fee that would be charged to a facility for just having into service to pick up someone off the ground or something like that?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, are you talking about lift assistance?
Yeah.
So they don't have any medical issues, you're just going to assist them?
Right.
We see a wide variety. What I would tell you is you'd want to cross out what an hour of your unit's time is. And generally, you're looking anywhere from, I would say, a hundred and fifty or three hundred dollars mostly on. But that can range across the country and based on local economics. But a few hundred dollars isn't uncommon for that type of fee.
With the, excuse me, with the new equipment that is being afforded, you know, to police departments, you mentioned the quint. But you've had an opportunity to look at the size of our station number one. Are we capable of accommodating the new equipment that is coming out? And the other things that are involved with some of the mandates that are coming down for, you know, having a decontamination unit that we don't have for, you know, our firefighters and some of the other important safety equipment for them. Any kind of idea on improving of our facilities? I know that may not have been a study, but I'm an opinion maybe for you.
Sure, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, it's a great question. I will tell you that given the modern fire service and what we've learned and how we operate, it's very tough to fit new equipment into a old facility, both size-wise and operationally. You too have been learning a lot about the health and wellness of our firefighters and things like decontamination of your fires is very important. Even things like capturing diesel exhaust and trying to do that sometimes in existing facilities are very challenging. And trying to retrofit them becomes very expensive, and generally, you can't. Some of the things you need to change, such as the size of the apparatus, is are not easy to accommodate on a current facility unless you have a significant model to hand around you and you add on. But to actually be modeled, we don't see a lot of value in a lot of places doing that. You see a lot of new facilities or additions on facilities if you have the room at the existing facility. Thank you.
How many firehouses have the decontamination units?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I don't know off the top of my head. And I would tell you that there's a very degree of implementation. And there's still a cultural aspect of the fire service adapting to some of this. And frankly, we're still in a lot of work in this, I would say, the last five or 10 years. So there's still a transition happening, so I don't think, I wouldn't say the majority of them have it, but people are starting to adapt.
Is that something that could be a collaborative effort between the different, so we have many townships and cities around here? Is that something that, like, if you go scuba diving, not every place has pressurized tanks? So is this the same thing where they could go to plane, they could go to lake, or the hospitals?
Sure, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Lots of times, the challenge is when you have a major fire, people want to go back to their own fire station because otherwise, it's going to take a while to get that unit back in service. So the time lapse after an incident, if you were sharing that with your family, it becomes challenging. It could take you days to get things back in service instead of hours. There may be opportunities, like you said, to do some things, but particularly on decontamination, time is of the essence. Like, you want to meet your firefighters decontaminated within an hour, and then you assume that they are dragged to another facility, plus when the vehicle there is still has to be decontaminated. So it doesn't really lend itself to regionalization like other things like responses do as well?
Somebody could have a question. Did you have a question? Oh, okay.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. We definitely enjoyed working with you and your staff, and thanks for having us out.
Thank you for the reason.
Thank you.
So moving on, so we'll do public speaks. At this time, members of the public wishing to address council, may do so. Each speaker may be given five minutes. How much shall be limited to legislative items appearing on tonight's agenda? The roles for speaking will appear on the screen. This is served as the warning for anyone with attendance in violation or result in objectionable processes. When you speak tonight, please put the microphone back into the little cord there. Start with your name and address and go for it.
Is there a leader in the poll or a poll?
You can pick it up if you want to, it's, yeah, if we can hear you.
Chuck Osborn, 307 Experiment.
If you need a microphone.
Sure, yeah, yeah, thanks.
307, Avenue Street, Southeast, North Camp, Ohio. The term of 50 years for shared development agreement with Jackson Township undermines judgment of future Northham city officials. I wish to speak this evening on the proposed shared development agreement with Jackson Township on tonight's agenda as Order Number 802023 and its connection to the proposed repeal of tax credits paid to other municipalities, also on tonight's agenda as Order Number 912023. The shared development agreement follows the Northham Community Improvement Corporation's outright purchase of property that is situated between Whipple and Wise for an amount in excess of four million dollars and the contemplated annexation of these properties. In the annexation of township property by municipalities, the municipality collects the property taxes and with powers granted by the state to municipalities can also involve income taxes. In this agreement, Northham agrees to allow Jackson Township to continue to collect property taxes. One more thing that with the recently announced budget shortfall, that Northham would welcome the added tax revenue that present circumstances show is desperately needed. Municipalities need both property tax revenue and income tax revenue to fund the myriad of services they provide for their citizens. Cities throughout Ohio and the nation have grown through unencumbered annexations. Now, to proceed with this incomplete annexation, as this agreement calls for, sets a precedent with townships that order Northham to the north and east to retain property taxes in any future annexations as they will demand the same special treatment now being given to Jackson Township. Northham has expended billions of dollars to acquire property on its western border, and it has every right to an unencumbered annexation to its city boundaries without any legal impediments. This proposal also requires and stipulates a term of 50 years. Consequently, it will legally bind many mayors and members of City Council long into the future. This agreement is an experiment that is not beneficial for Northham and not entered by other municipalities. No one else will unfold in the next year, much less 50 years. This agreement will not afford future Northham elected officials, the argument, to pass judgment on this experiment and reaffirm its continuance. Adoption of this agreement, if that path is chosen, should be with sunset provisions at reasonable time periods, certainly not long into the future for a term of 50 years. As Fedden and I only remarked on the way the proposal to repeal tax credits provided to city residents for income taxes paid to other municipalities is counterintuitive to the shared development agreement with Jackson Township. The agreement, Act 90, Order Number 8023, will allow Jackson Township to keep property taxes on city-owned property that is to be annexed. Yet, in Order 912023, Kent now wants to, Northham now wants to collect income taxes from residents who have already paid income taxes to the municipal valley where they work. Why doesn't Northham collect property taxes that is rightfully owed following the annexation of property in Jackson Township before going after double taxation of its own residents? Thank you.
I'm Kira Reiner from 1610 Hartsmann Circle, Northwest. I just wanted to talk tonight about the ordinance regarding the removal of reciprocity from the city of Northham.
I'm sorry, regarding what?
The removal of reciprocity in the city of Northham. I watched the presentation that was done last week that said it would only impact thirty-five percent of residents. I happen to be one of those thirty-five percent of the residents. But I just want you to take into consideration that it's not just me it's impacting, it's impacting my entire household, which includes my husband, it includes my children. So I'd be interested to see what that sort of pie graph would look like if we looked at it at households versus individuals and how it might have to be changed a little bit. The other thing is, I just really believe that if we're going to make any changes to taxation, that it should go to voters. When we moved into this community and decided to stay in this community, one of the things we look at is the tax structure of this community. And having reciprocity is like an incentive to be here. So I just think that it should be up to the people if something like that's going to change. So if the entire community voted to change that, I would be willing to go with that because that's what the community decided. I understand that there's a lot that we want to do for this community. I just think I really want us to take a hard look at, are there any other options? Does it have to be complete removal of all the reciprocity? Could it be like you get a certain percentage of credit, like, could it be phased in? And if it's for facilities, which, I don't know, maybe I was a little confused. I think it's for facilities is what it's for. Is it a permanent thing or is it just to get the facilities where we need them to be? And then we wouldn't, we'd like bring two, three and state reciprocity, just stop that, but that's all I have, so. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Larry Trent, 1127 East Maple, Northham.
Which layer, say again?
Army.
Say again.
1127 East Maple Street, Northham, Ohio. First, I want to make this short and to the point, but a lot of people are probably going to speak tonight on the tax issue. And I want to bring up, how did we get to that point? Why? Why did we get to that point that we need to do this? Let's just start with present actual fit facts from the city finance report presented to council at generally the first quarter, the first council meeting of each quarter. All of these funds, I believe, would be drawn from the general fund. Let's start with legal first. In 2021, we had over $500,000 paid to the legal firm. In 2022, it dropped to 19363. And in 2023 through September, we're sitting at 161,192 dollars for total legal expenses of 651,555 dollars. Why the drop in '22 and '23? I don't know. I have no idea. Next, let's take Safe Belt. A lot of comments on them lately, along with the city's intimidation of small local businesses. In 2022, we paid Safe Belt 245,312 dollars. In 2023, I couldn't find any checks issued to Safe Belt. I don't know if they've changed their name or, I couldn't find them as located on your check register. Uh, last week, the big one, checks issued to CIC. CIC, September 1, 2022 to September 30, 2023, we paid out $6,315,235. That's out of the general fund, folks, out of the general fund. The last check issued to them was September 26 of 2023 in the amount of $1,398,54. Okay, that, this check issued would have been well within the framework of any 2024 budget works or discussions, well within the framework. Now, why was the shortage brought up the night before the election? When you folks would have known that well before the election night. In my opinion, it swayed the votes of some 6,200 citizens had they, had they known of the North Camp administration planning to address their plans to discontinue tax credits to other communities. Think of it, think of it. The school levy may not have passed. Is our government taking the voting rights away from the people? Think of it. In summary, what can be done? Quit spending, quit spending taxpayer money on gambles. In summary, once again, maybe North Camp citizens are a little brighter than some of you council people might think. Thank you.
Glenn Saylor Jr., 340th Avenue Northwest, North Camp. It's kind of a tough act to follow here, but I try my best here, okay? But it very well, very well designed. I come to council tonight to get talked about the same ordinance. In full disclosure, I'm retired and live on social security, so I pay no city income tax. This ordinance would place a tremendous and inordinate burden on the hardworking citizens of this city who through no fault of their own, work in cities other than North Camp and already pay the disproportionate taxes of these cities. Some as high as 2.5% if they work in Camp or Agri. These individuals would not have to pay an additional 1.5% of their income to North Camp as well. For a citizen or a resident working in Camp, for example, and making modest $50,000 a year, this would amount to a tax increase of $750 a year. That amount is a good portion of a month's rent or a month's worth of groceries. If a change in the income tax code is necessary to increase revenue, I would propose that the city place an income tax levy on ballot to increase the income tax rate to 2%, which increase would put us on par with a number of comparable municipalities such as Green and Maslin. And just as importantly, I would maintain a 1.5% credit for taxes paid to other municipalities. This would equally spread a tax increase of 0.5% to all workers, whether they work in the city or not. Under this proposal, the resident who works in Camp and makes $50,000 a year would pay not an additional $750 per year, but rather $250 per year in North Camp income tax. Similarly, a resident that works in the city of North Camp and makes that same $50,000 a year would pay the same additional $250 a year. I reject the assertion, either implied or implicit, that these residents that work in cities other than North Camp are somehow freeloaders, that they're getting all these North Camp services and they aren't paying anything for them. That hardworking resident who I talked about earlier that works in Camp and makes $50,000 a year is already paying 2.5% in taxes. That's $1,250 a year to the city of Camp. Trust me, that resident would gladly give, that resident would gladly give, if he could, 1.5% of his income to North Camp in lieu of paying 2.5% to Camp. But unfortunately, he has no control over this matter. To squeeze that 35% of the residents of North Camp in the manner so that you could shout from the mountaintop that, look, we didn't have to increase taxes for the other 65% of you is plain wrong and misguided. Maybe my suggestion proposal, increasing the city income tax to 2% while maintaining a 1.5% tax credit will fall on deaf ears, but certainly the legislation being proposed is not reasonable and should be scrapped. I understand again that the raising the income tax rate to 2% would require an affirmative vote of the public, but based upon the administration's presentation made at the last council meeting of the whole, I feel that the public would view favorably an increase to 2% if they were told about what the city plans to do. And as long as a 1.5% tax credit for individuals that pay taxes outside of North Camp is maintained. Thank you.
Can you spell your last name for me, please?
S A Y L O R. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Lorraine Holmer, 505 Corrello Street Southwest. I'm here as a resident of North Camp and I'm also a business owner. I own Little Sparrow Bookshop on Main Street.
Lorraine, you're here.
I speak to you tonight as both a resident and a business owner. I own Little Sparrow Bookshop on Main Street. My bookstore is located in the city-owned building at 1206 North Main, to be exact, which was presented in the facilities plan as a site selected for the relocation of the city's administrative offices. According to the implementation plan, this relocation could happen in zero to three years. Standing here tonight, I do not know if or when my business, along with many other businesses in the building, will be displaced by this decision. I do not know this because representatives of the city have not been forthcoming or transparent about the plans with us. Those plans impact all of the businesses currently located in that building and we feel we deserve the courtesy of a little heads up. I am celebrating my one year, one year in business anniversary next week and I'm really proud of that. I'm thankful to my customers and community for embracing our bookstore. It's been an amazing experience and I'm super privileged and proud to be in front of the community. Had I known that I may have to relocate my business in only a few short years, I may have made a different choice. But I really wanted to be in North Camp and I really wanted to be on Main Street. On behalf of my own business and fellow business owners in the building, I ask the city representatives to be transparent and honest about their plans in the following years, in the following ways. Uh, moving forward, I'd really like to see open, transparent communication with the businesses currently leasing space in 1206 North Main Street regarding this possible displacement. Tell us if our business will be displaced, to be honest. We've all asked on numerous occasions. Tell us when small, small business needs more notice and or more information in just zero to three years. The bookstore business is a tough one and I will not turn profit before I change my business plan in the first five years. And I'm only year one. This would be a really difficult expense for me to bear, to move in the next year or two. 10,000 books is a lot of books to move. Displacing small business comes at a heavy financial burden for all of us, whether your books are not. Finding and leasing new space, the cost to move, the cost of advertising so your customers can find you, the, uh, the cost of renovating a new space. I looked at just about every property that's available in North Camp and this was the only one that actually worked for me, for my business. I know it's out there, it hasn't changed any year. So anything that I were to take on now would require renovation. I understand that cities grow and things change, but we can have roots and veins. We can be true to what makes our community so wonderful. And that is our small town and our small businesses and our neighbors who provide all these amazing services and businesses for us. That's what makes this community a place that 11 years ago, we decided to be at home. And I know a lot of people feel the same way about this community. Um, one last point. I don't really answer this question, but the first thing that I thought was that this property was taken by Anna Termain for the purpose of building the new safety center. That obviously, that plan obviously changed, but I am curious whether that is any acceptable use of the building to change plans and not use it for what it was taken for. I don't think that the previous owner of the property would agree with this approach of changing plans. I understand progress and the need to grow and the need for economic development. I respect all of those things. I want to see North Camp thrive, but I want to be a part of that picture in the future. And in order to ensure that happens, I would also request that perhaps some sort of grant to be identified to help small businesses who are being displaced by this master plan, by the implementation plans. That would help us tremendously. That's all I have. Thank you.
My name is Dale Freeman, 625 Edwards Street Southeast, North Camp. Wanted to talk about the proposed removal of the 1.5% of the incentive. Obviously, I'm a full guy. My wife is working in the city, she teaches since her 40th year. All right, she's cheap and she pays 2.5% to see you camp. All right, that's again, enough. To add another 1.5% on top of that, again, would, you know. In light of the fact that all of us are paying much higher prices for everything, is it just wonderful, kind of the wall looks embarrassing? All right, seems to be ill timed for this right now. It also seems to be that, they lack something, they realize something, okay? Everybody's having drinks, everybody's having their belts. So the question is, why does the government always consider that we've got more for them when we only have more for ourselves? All right, there's got to be a better way. And I'm a growth kind of guy. I see it as the expand pie, that expanding, you know, opportunities throughout the city with more businesses. Obviously, I think we know we're the biggest business opportunity wise in the city. And that's right on Main Street where nothing's been done for how many years, okay? And I'm not talking about our maple, I'm talking about our Main Street. Something needs to be done about that because right now, nothing is being done, all right? And I read a few months ago that the economic development board was, has not met its goals numerous times. And essentially, they're still in place. I don't understand that. If we don't meet our goals at work, we have consequences, it seems like that. So anyway, again, like I say, I'm not in favor of this. And it's, oh, one thing that was said that I, really surprised me was that everybody else is giving rid of their incentive for this. I mean, that's something that's said, it's like, okay, why does that ever be an idea to do something better? Just because other people are, you know, eliminating something that has been in place for a number of years? Why is that something to be my idea for us? Thank you.
My name is Tristan Petro, 400 East Berry Avenue Northeast. Kind of like everybody else up here, definitely talk about tax credit. I don't choose the word, I kind of have to. That's where my industry is at, that's where I get the jobs I pay for it. Not you the choice of my own, I don't have those opportunities here in the camp. So due to that, and now I have to pay 4% of my entire income to city taxes. Okay, we are not focusing on development of, you know, the building that the last gentleman just talked about. That's been 15 years, right, that we're completely out of. We can tax second, the developers for those. Why isn't he taking up responsibility for just letting the building sit there? Why are we putting the tax burden back on our citizens? And as far as fair, I know the statement that was right, it was stated that this is more fair than a property tax increase. There's a lot of residents, people in our areas that use our schools, that use the same roads, that all our schools right there in the city, they use it, don't pay any tax. They live in Plain Township or Lake Township. So how is that fair to spread amongst the 35% across the city that benefit out of these? Everyone's benefited from this. I also don't understand to the point of the other gentleman, how we got to this point. It's, it's not like you, you know, we have a fixed income almost. It's not like there's, you know, we have to worry about sales or deflections. You're not selling products. You don't have to worry about fiscal balances. You guys know ahead of time generally what your income is going to be. How do we spend beyond that, justify that and then say, last moment at the end of the year, hey, 35%, we've got to pick up the budget because we didn't plan for it. Do that, we hired 19 people this year. How is that physically responsible to hire 19 people that we don't have the funds to pay for it? Next year's budget, I said no insurance will lay up. You guys think this is crazy?
I'm sorry, next year's budget, what?
Next year's budget, if you look 2024, I know we have a huge increase in insurance and benefits goes along with hiring those 19 people. We budget a hundred thousand less. Do we see that going down at all? I mean, costs usually go up, as far as I see. Could we restructure some of those programs? Maybe we're at an 80/20 to cover that extra hundred thousand. Is it fair that people that work here do that? I really think a property tax amendment on the ballot is what people vote for is the best way to do this. I don't think it should be up to a few members of the council that really don't have a skin on their game. I mean, do any of you work outside of the city and pay taxes? Not the standing majority, okay? I mean, I'm on a payback show and stupid ones.
We've got two of us.
We got four. Four total of this tax, that's the entire city house. So thank you for your time.
Richard DeCadeemo, 276 Cordelia Street Southwest.
Say the address again.
276 Cordelia Street Southwest in North Camp, Ohio. 276 Cordelia Street, Southwest in North Canton, Ohio. I also like this gentleman over here, some others, saying, "I work out of the city. I work in the city of Canton, and I work in the city of Canton because that's where my job is." And based on this, I'll be 2.5%. I pay for that city, would be an additional 1.5%. Over two and a half times what a typical resident in this city would pay. And I ask, is that fair? Because if I could pay those income taxes to the city of North Canton, I would do so. But I don't have that choice. So is it fair to expect people who live outside the city limits to have to take on another tax burden? Because we choose to live here. This is a choice of ours. As much of a choice as it is to live here, it's a choice of ours that we can leave here. Because what's to stop me if I want to live and have my children go to North Canton City Schools, to move out of the city limits? To Shepherd's Gate, to Boddle, to move anywhere else? Because I don't want to be burdened to get more taxing taxes. And I say this because, as myself, I have voted for the levies. The school levies, I have voted for. That's something that I'm willing to do, I'm willing to invest in this community. But what I don't want to do, I don't want to be forced to invest or to put more money when that's not the same for everybody else. When I feel like I'm singled out. And I think, when you look at this, yes, it's short-term gains what you can get by taking our income tax as well, but I don't know if you're looking at the implications for what this would be long-term. Because when you look at that, if you have a young family, if somebody works outside the city, are they going to choose to live in the city limits? Is that something they're going for? Because I would venture, yes, if they look at what the implications are going to be for them, they're not going to stay in the city. They're going to look at Jax, they're going to look at Lake, they're going to look at somewhere else, like I said, just outside the city limits that still gets the city of North Canton. That's something that we have to look at. We also have to look at if another levy were to go. If this were to pass and I would be paying, my family would be paying an extra 1.5% income tax and another levy were to come on the ballot, I would be less inclined to vote for that. The money that I would be forced to pay through this income tax that I'm already paying in another city, I would feel that if you can't do what you can with that, why am I giving you more money? Seems irresponsible. Last thing I would touch on is, I know this happened almost 10 years ago, but the city of Masson has a financial difficulty. I remember they were in a very dire fiscal situation at the point where the state of Ohio had to take over their budget for a period of time. That's the type of fiscal emergency they were in. They had a city income tax credit. And during that time period, I think they lowered it to 75% city income tax. So even that, in a fiscal emergency, they did not get rid of their city income tax credit. They lowered it. So I ask, why is this city income tax taken all the way? If a city that was in a fiscal emergency, taken over by the state, only lowered it to 75%? I think we just need to ask why this is such a dire situation that we need to take away the whole thing. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jim Tedrick, I live at 309 Rose Lane Street, Southwest.
Jim, would you be so kind to pick up the mic? Thank you, sir.
I'm here also to comment on this ordinance 91, Act 2023. I'd like to go on record here saying that I'm favoring keeping services the same or even reducing them, if that's what it takes to balance the budget here. And that includes the building plans that were presented here tonight. I don't mind if the snow removal is not pristine on my residential street first thing in the morning, and if I do need to have an ambulance sent to my house, I'd be very content if just one ambulance came and not a whole fleet of cars, you know? It's a little heated, it's a heated situation tonight, the fire department, and I got to think about some of my past experiences here in the city. When my father passed away in a rest home here, of course, I got called down there, and I remember the paper backings from the EKG were laying on top of the light litter, and there's EMS and fire people lining the halls hanging out there. I remember one Easter in my neighborhood, someone was feeling a little dizzy and called in for help, and, you know, two vehicles, EMS, a fire EMS ambulance plus some other ones. I saw some pretty high-ranking people there on the holiday. I don't know if there were six, eight people out there. I remember one time I suspected that my carbon monoxide tester wasn't working properly, and I called the fire department and said, "Hey, you know, you got one of those gadgets that can detect, you know, whether you've got gas in the house? Can you, you know, come over and, you know, maybe check things out?" Of course, I emptied out the entire fire department to come out there. And like I said, as I was listening to this presentation, I just wondered, I think some other people have alluded to it, if things were better managed in the city, you know, we need more of this income or that much. And like I say, I feel that, you know, we shouldn't be essentially, you know, taxed twice to support this kind of a situation here. And I didn't hear it in the presentation, but I thought I read it in the paper here that, you know, part of this money is necessary to improve your sleeping quarters in this new building. Now, in my career, I worked in a slaughterhouse, I worked in steel mills, I worked in fabricating plants. I've worked every hour of the day, every day of the year, and I've never had an employer try to accommodate me being comfortable in a job here. So, you know, I question, you know, how some of this money is, you know, going to be spent here. So in conclusion, I think we have the income tax credit situation perfectly in place because it was a fair, right thing to do, and I don't think that has changed here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cindy Zulidi, I live at 146 Street, Northeast, North Canton. I'm talking about the income taxes while I'm retired, so it doesn't affect me and my husband, but it affects my kids and as well as a lot of family and friends. I really have a problem with this, it doesn't seem fair. I don't like the way that it was kind of slid in. I think if we are, the more fair way, as someone alluded to, maybe to put it to the voters, maybe we increase it to 2%. I looked at other cities in Stark County, Louisville has 2%. They give a reduced credit of 60%. And it goes on to explain which is a little complicated. Alliance, 2%, they give credit. Masson, 2%, they give credit to other municipalities. Canton, 2.5%, they give credit. Canal Fulton, 2% with credit. East Canton is 1.5%, they do not. They were the only city I could find that didn't. Hartville is 1%, they give credit. So most of the cities that have income taxes in the county give credit for those who work in another city. I don't think we want the reputation as being one of the only ones that doesn't. We want, I've lived in North Canton my entire adult life, I love living in North Canton. We want the community to be known as a vibrant, wonderful place to live. We are working towards that, I appreciate the efforts. But I don't think this is the image you want to have. Come, live in North Canton, but we're going to tax you twice if you don't have a job that is in North Canton. I don't think so. As well, I was, we were visiting with friends last night for dinner. Nice to go get together, we were talking about this. Everybody there is not happy about this idea. Several of the people are still working and have jobs outside of the city of Canton. And one of the guys said, "You know what? If this passes, I will never again vote for any levy that North Canton puts on the ballot." That's my opinion, but I have a lot, a feeling that a lot of people have a similar mentality or could. And if you try to slide this through and don't let the voters have an opinion on this, they're going to be less inclined to want to do other things for the city if they don't have a chance to say their piece on this. So I'd like you to keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Hi, Amanda Fisher, 814 North Valley Boulevard, Northwest, North Canton, Ohio. 44720. So I feel like there's probably a lot of other moms that aren't here tonight like the one other woman that we saw. And my kids are home, we don't need to get them to bed. That's why I don't look like I'm out here. I depend on the city council to make wise decisions with our money. I rented for six years on Emerson Avenue, and I bought last summer and I regret it now. I deeply regret it. I wish I would have bought in Lake Township, the way things have gone since. I purchased the home, it's sad, it really is sad. I was all for the new schools, you know, the playground, it's a little excessive in the park. Got rid of the skate park where the kids that don't want to play on the playground are too big, run off, the kids from there. I thought that was a little crazy. Now they're talking, getting rid of Dogwood Pool, all the things that I thought were great about our community are slowly slipping away. And there's more and more taxes. There's three places, three places I know in the city limits that employs medical systems, and they'll pay me $13 an hour. Or I can work in Canton and I can make $18 an hour. Either way, that's still only $38,000 a year. It took me forever to be able to buy a home here, and you guys are going to tax me out of it. Between the levies and this. So, you know, I say I won't vote for another levy if you guys do this. And I'll tell everyone there's other people I know not to vote for because it's not the city I went to seven years ago.
Hello, Marsha Kiesling, 315 Madison Street, Southwest. First of all, I want to thank everybody for calling me back. Appreciate it, I'd like to thank you for the preview, but I appreciate it. I do want, let everybody know that, I know for sure four of you work outside the city and pay, you know, outside the city income tax. I do not, so on the record, I do work here in the city of North Canton. So I have no dog and just hunt ready at the moment, but I was on the council for 16 years, and we did speak about this maybe twice in 16 years I was a part of it. And it went no further than one sentence. So for me to learn that not only that past speaking about it that we value on as a piece of legislation to pass after one presentation last week, no real numbers, no real, you know, what is this going to create dollar-wise? What other communities are getting rid of their income tax credits? Mr. Matheny told me he thought, somebody sent through the RITA data, there's eight of the 33 cities that RITA helps, you know, class income tax from. What are those eight cities? What kind of money are we looking at? I think first and foremost, you've got, you have to give us an option. You can't just say, "We're going to get rid of reciprocity." And maybe that's your intention next week for the committee of the whole, I don't know. But I'm also being told that the committee of the whole is turning into a council meeting and you're going to give it a second reading. So that seems a little disingenuous. Because then the next week, the third reading, and that gives us revolt, the opportunity to vote yes three times in a row, doesn't give Ms. Owens an opportunity as a new council member to have her say in it because her term will not have started yet. And I remember very specifically in 16 years when I worked together, Daryl, you made it very clear, and Patrick, as you were a council member one time as well, that even the budget didn't get its third reading on election year because the new council members needed to have an opportunity to have a say because they were going to be responsible for it for the next two years. So several things seem really outsourced for me on this one. I guess the biggest that it was said at one point was, "Why are we here?" And I was told by John in the day that, you know, we've had two years of deficit spending. I get that, I went through the Hoover Company leaving. We had $20 million in the bank, and next thing you know, we're, oh crap. So I get it. But in this day and age, with the amazing, you know, computing skills of everybody and being able to look forward, and we know how many residents we have, why are we deficit spending for two years? And I get why you want to do reciprocity right now. I get why you want to get it through by November 30th because it takes 30 days then to become law, and you can start collecting January 1st of 2024. And clearly, we need the money. And if we put an income tax on the ballot, which would not be until March, which I don't even know if we have enough time to get it on the ballot at this point. Okay, we do. We can't start collecting until January 2025. So there's a year's worth of even more deficit spending. So I understand the proposal, Patrick, Mayor, because it sounds like the paper of your side of the aisle. I understand the proposal. But I think with that proposal, maybe other options should have come with it and not the first reading the very next week, you know, seven days later, where we barely had the opportunity to read it in the paper and to see it online. That's just not how I think it should have went. I hope we slow it down a little bit because I think that's what we're all asking for. Mr. Saylor, I've known you for 20 years. I actually thought your proposal was not a bad idea. So I think there's a lot of other things you could come up with, and this is one of them. I'm not saying it's not, but I don't think you want to give it three readings and get it done by the end of this year. I just think you need to give us other options and show us, if we had to make cuts, where would you make those cuts? Give us the option to see what it is we would have to give up and what would a 2% look like if we had to pass it next year, even though we can't collect till the next year. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Joe Gucci, 1350 East Maple Street, North Canton, Ohio. I just have one question. I received a paper today from the state of Ohio on taxes. It says municipal income tax. It says state law requires a flat rate within a municipality. It says the rate is determined locally. The maximum rate without voter approval is 1%. Is this true in the state of Ohio? That's my one question I have as far as it has. The other question is, we passed a levy back in 2021 for the EMS, for the fire station and everything, and it said we were supposed to acquire, what, 1. something million a year? 1.38? Not the exact number, but we were supposed to acqui... Where did that money go? Where is that money at that we supposedly have been collecting since 21? And we're going to use for the new fire station and all these different things? I mean, there was a couple articles in paper from the mayor talking about it that, you know, this was going to fix a lot of stuff, this levy had passed, and now we're trying to push another one through here, so that's my only thing. Thank you.
Pam Sanford, 326 Bathville Street, Southwest. I'm not as well-versed as some of these other speakers tonight. I certainly appreciated hearing their comments, and they've said it much better than I wanted to say it. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak before you this evening. My husband and I have lived in North Canton for 34 years. We raised three children in North Canton, and young graduate from Hoover High School, and now we have grandchildren that attend North Canton City Schools. We have supported and participated in both community and school events. We continue to do so even now. We have always been proud to say that we lived in North Canton until lately. Lately, there have been a lot of negative vibes in our community. I'm no longer able to sit back and not have whatever voice heard. My husband and I both work outside of the city of North Canton. We pay taxes in the municipalities in which we work, a part of which we get credit for our North Canton income tax return. My understanding is now the mayor and some council members want to do away with this credit. So now those of us unlucky enough to not work in the city of North Canton are going to be double penalized. We will pay local taxes where we work and to the city of North Canton. Since the city of North Canton cannot possibly provide jobs for everyone who lives within the city limits, this seems unfair. I have worked since I was 16 years old, with a few years off when our children were born. I'm tired. I drive to Cleveland every day for work east side. Since COVID, the cost of everything has increased. If you are fortunate enough to even get a cost of living raise in your paycheck annually, it's still not enough to cover all of the increases that have taken place. Last week, voters passed another levy for the North Canton City Schools to make it possible to build a middle school. We supported this levy, even though we just passed a levy a few years back for the building of the primary and intermediate buildings. We supported this levy because our schools are important to the future of our community. This levy, however, will tack on to the countless other levies we are still paying for and will add to our taxes for the next 36 years. Mr. Mayor, we supported your election and reelection, as well as Mr. Orr's election as word for city councilmen, the word in which we live. We ask that you now hear us and support us. Those of us who work outside the city should now have to pay for all who live in North Canton. We were asked that if we consider your decision. Thank you.
Stinking everybody else is talking about. You know, it's really irritating that for over 25 years, my wife and I, we've never, never hesitated to vote for a levy, never. But I can tell you, after today, it's done. Your support from my family is done. Not just my family, my friends, my neighbors, you know, everybody's pissed off about this. But what's more irritating is this should be your last option, your last resort. There should have been some type of town hall meeting, get the voters that you had to pay. Give me options. How about, you know what, without this, things have to change. You know, Dogwood Pool might have to shut down this summer. We might not pay any of yours this summer. But no, you know, that shouldn't, that wasn't even on the table. It's just irritating that this is your first solution to go to. In July, Mr. Oriola, you stated in the paper that you didn't want to put the 1.5 income tax. You wanted to leave it the same, to bring in businesses, and you didn't want the financial burden on citizens. Obviously, something changed because you're throwing it back on 6,200 feet. You know, you didn't balance the budget. You were balancing the budget on 6,200 feet. You failed to do your job, and you can shake your head on if you want, but you failed to do your job. 6,200 people you want to fill it out. One other thing is, I'm pro police, I'm pro fire all day long. I work at the Canton Fire Department, my wife's a nurse at All Hospital. But I don't like being lied to. Don't sit there and tell me in the paper last weekend that North Canton doesn't have any modern fire apparatus. And don't tell me new fire apparatus is 70 football. You and I can argue that all day long, and you're going to lose every time. You know, I want the best for North Canton Fire Department and Police Department. I know the fire chief. But don't sit there and BS me and give me a lie that we don't have modern fire apparatus. You want, I, I've been working in Canton 23 years. I know what's modern and what's not. And you can roll your eyes like all you want, but you know what? What irritates me too, and why a lot of people aren't here, is because their minds are made up, you guys are done. You don't want to hear anything else. You don't want to raise the income tax. You don't want to do any tax levers. You don't want to do any equitable property tax. You've got nothing. You want to go straight to this. And Mayor, when you ran against Mayor Bell, you talked about transparency. I don't think it's very transparent that in July, this was never talked about, and then last week I read it in the paper, and today you're having your first reading. It's not transparency to me at all. It's, it's irritating. And you know what? It's just, our youngest graduates in two years, and we're out of here. There's no benefit. You tell me the benefit of staying in North Canton when I have to be double taxed. Please tell me the benefit.
Mrs. Sanford, I can't, I'm not giving you your comments every week.
Tammy Anderson, 460 East Wind Circle, North Canton.
I look familiar, don't I, Mr. Anderson?
Just want to use it.
You're putting a park behind my house. It's going to cost you $10,000 to defend. I work in Salem, Ohio. You know how far that is? I drive two hours. If there was a decent job, decent paying job here in North Canton, I would gladly work in North Canton. The only reason why we stayed in North Canton, I've lived here for 52 years. The only reason why we stayed in here was because of the schools. My son's gifted. That was the only reason nine years ago we decided to stay in North Canton. And now you're telling me I got to pay extra taxes because I work in Salem? There's no decent jobs here. You're bringing in parks and resale. They don't pay anything. You have to have two incomes. You're going to, it's me and my husband who are going to tax. We both work outside the city. So I have.
Andy Ziegler, 555 Roseland Street Southwest, North Canton, Ohio. I am struck by how hard this must be, how hard it is to sit in your chairs. And I'm not trying to appease them in any way, shape, or form, I'm just stating that I've thought about this from 10 different angles. My wife and I are both, she's a Hoover Brown graduate, she's a woman. We moved back to this town seven years ago for Club Saliva. And when we moved back, we wanted to live here. That hasn't changed for me, nor will any type of city. I love this town, and my wife loves this town, and we're raising our three little boys here. And the thing that has struck me is that the buildings are getting older, that the firefighters need support, that the police needs greater access and greater support. We need to be accommodating to that and really supportive of that. But I work in the city of Akron. It kind of stinks the idea of the 5% tax. That's a hard pill to swallow, and I'm primarily a soul breather in my household. But my heart really goes out to those who, who, you know, are part of that single parent family, who have that or may not be as supportive. And it just strikes me that from a fiduciary standpoint, is there another way to approach this? As a voter, as somebody who is of, you know, on the right side of the aisle, I believe that it is the voter's constitutional that I have their say in these matters, that we should have the ability to vote on this and to say whether we want this or not. And also, is it one and a half in perpetuity? Is this one and a half, the buildings are done? Is this one and a half ever going to leave? And do I expect another trust me to that down the road? Without any sort of guidance on that, the levy is something else. I have guidance as to how long these things last, and without that, I'm really stuck in a hole with 4%, if not more as time goes on. And to me, will I keep voting for that? Yes. Will I support people who I think care and love this community? Yes, yes I will. Because that's the right thing to do, this constituent of the community. Will I have to cause, couple in the question, who I want in these offices going forward? Sure, I think any good person does. But this is a good town, and I think there's a lot to build on. And while, you know, we've all seen the Hoover Company. I remember riding my bike when Hoover Company went under up the street, seeing that on Maple, and watching my despondent friends' dads and moms who lost their jobs a little early. And what hurt that did for this community was tremendous. But you all were trying to bring this back to something. And I just encourage you, look inward and say, what is our objective? How do we physically get there while still supplying the great resources that we have in this community, but also doing it in a way that will not impair future development, impair those who want to live here, who want to grow with you? How do we inspire those who want to contribute more? Because just to vote by you all for the 1.5% tax really is just kind of a striking dagger to many people, as obvious as that. So I just encourage you, let's look a little bit more inward. Let's think about how best to attract this, and how can we as a community rally and support what we're trying to do rather than coming apart as soon as we're being forced to do it in some way? So that's all. Thank you.
And my kind husband slightly forgot to mention potentially a few things. In addition to, we were looking at the Rita list, and the city of North Canton, we were just pondering the idea that possibly there could be a task force to consult that the other cities that are comparable to us, like the state of the elimination. Hold on. Within Stark County, here we go. Melbourne has a 1% income tax, Mineral City 1%, Minerva 1.5%.
Melbourne has 1% income tax.
Mineral City 1, Minerva 1.5. Essentially, all within a close approximation of us, within 25 miles, you know, Orgo, same thing. It doesn't get task force that could somehow look further into how these cities are giving their tax refunds and still managing the book. That's all. Just moving forward, just a plan to create a task force. That's all.
Well, it's gone. Okay. I'm going to make a motion that we suspend the rules so we can have a response.
I'll make that motion.
Alternatively, we could amend the agenda so that this is the next item.
That's good.
That would be fine. Let's, let's do that. I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda.
You want the second?
All vader.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. I can't hear you. We're starting 9A. Okay. I think we should please hear the title of ordinance, 91 to 2023.
An ordinance amending Chapter 192 income tax of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton in order to repeal credits for taxes paid to other municipalities.
We're going to open it up to comments and thoughts regarding this. Last week, we heard from our city administrator with a presentation that talked about the need and why he felt that reciprocity was the answer to this. So we will open it up to thoughts and comments right now. You want me to start? Okay. All right, I'll start. So I received a text today or tonight from a person, and I, he kind of said it perfectly because he said some places could get away with it, but not North Canton. People pay attention there. And I love that he thought that because he knew this was happening tonight, and I was not for this last week, and I felt a little bit like an island, and I felt like many of you, like verbatim, that you were in my head and my thoughts, and it took a lot for me to not stand up and kind of clap. So thank you for being here. I was worried that people weren't going to come. I didn't know, I didn't know how to reach everybody because I didn't know, do people watch their repository or do they listen to the radio? And so thank you. North Canton got it right, and I so appreciate that. In all my 10 years or 11 years I've been here, I've never received more phone calls or texts or conversations regarding any topic. And that's a lot because we had a lot of people here one night on cat night. And so you guys beat cat night. So I appreciate that we're more concerned about our taxes than the roaming cats in this area. Other than that, I was cat night. People care about our past in our city. So for you to show that this matter and that you were paying attention means everything. And I think one of the things that really struck me, I took notes from everybody that spoke, but I heard Mrs. Redinger, who was here earlier, Kara, she had casted a number of us this week, and when she talks about that household and how it affects them, and not only herself, but her kids and her husband, it reminded me, it's not just one person, it's not just those of us that work in Canton and feel like we're already paying our share. It's, a lot of times, it's those people that are the single moms or are living on means. And thank you for speaking and saying that and getting emotional. I think you made us all emotional up here. And that's what we're supposed to do, and you said you trust us. And I get emotional thinking about that too because that's our responsibility. I think what we're supposed to make the lives of our citizens better. And we try to do the best we can, and sometimes we don't get it right, we know that. But I don't want this to be, thank you for your comments and your fire engine and working as a firefighter in Canton and saying, is this your last resort? And this was an easy choice, in my opinion. I think taking off reciprocity, we don't have to ask you to vote. It's done, it increases with our income, we don't ever have to come back to you. And I've heard those comments, and I don't like them. I like what you said about the levies, they, they're time sensitive. They, they give people a protection, you know how much you're going to pay. And I think we can do better, and I hope, I hope that people heard you tonight and that we're at least going to pause, that we're going to take a step back. I reached out to other council members this week, I reached out to our city auditor, I responded to you as citizens, and I just hope that we can just take a pause for a second. I know we have financial issues. I know that. But I think there's some other ways. I have a sheet here that talks about raising it to 2%. We only raised it to 1.75. We filled the gap with a million, 527 extra. And that's keeping our credit in reduction. So there are other ways. Len, I think we spoke perfectly about some different options. So just thank you for giving us other options. Thank you for the task force idea and different collaborations. And Andy, you talked about like not paring and looking to inspire and to rally support. I don't like it when people say, I'm leaving in two years, and you tricked us, you voted, you announced us the day after our levy passed. I don't want to be in competition with the schools. I want to move collectively together. And that makes me so sad that you would think that we would do that, but I don't, you know, it looked like it.
You did.
It looked like it. I know, I know. And the, the budget doesn't normally come until this point, but like you said, really this just happened. We didn't know this, we haven't had shortfalls, and I take blame too. So thank you, just thank you. I think, I hope you can pause there.
But the last week, I've gotten so many phone calls by this young people. I'm with you.
Can we slow down? Yeah. We're going to have to slow down. I didn't, I heard a few ideas, but we need all of your ideas. So please call me with some ideas. Please call anyone up here. They'll return your calls. They'll call you. Thank you. But thank you.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming up tonight. Can you hear me?
You can be, you're outside.
How's it? I want to thank everybody for coming up tonight. This has really been a great town hall meeting. What I like to do, if I can, as some of the council members know, I'm the guy who finds a way back issue. And that's one of the advantages of being a volunteer, creating a care. How do you get, I heard one question, how do you get where we are today? Well, when the city adopted this village income tax in 1955, I actually went and looked at the North Canton Sunday to get some details. And that was about 81% that the council could oppose. We had a town of probably about 5,500, 5,600 people. Went very big. And the residents who lived in this town worked in the town. Ken Schultz ran the shoe repair. Fry ran the hardware store. Hoover, Tiff practiced medicine. Andy Bosh moved over from Piddle Hill. Greenhoe ran the Sunoco station on North Main. They all lived here and just paid the tax. We had something else going for us. And that was we had the Hoover Company, a goose that weighed the gold in the head. We had the wages, we had the taxes on all the employees who were there. Some were between 3,000 and 4,000 dollars a month. Plus the corporate taxes. Pretty amazing. When I was on council in the 80s, our challenge was to use that cash flow wisely. And we began a program of curbing the government streets without assessing. Completely rebuilding streets. So if you lived over in Maple Crest, for example, job got taken care of. It really improved the quality of life for the residents on that street. But as we were building that, that community up from its village that had existed 30 years before, when I went on council, or just before I went on council, Danny Gray, who ran for mayor, B. Charlie Stross, ran on peeling the streets. They were all chicken. They were chicken sealed. He wanted permanent pay. When I was on council, we went into permanent improvements without assessing. So we used the money, tried to put it into the system. But in the mid 60s, something happened in this community. And many of you all speak for it. We became a bedroom community. People work here. They lived somewhere close. And they were able to take advantage of the tax credit. Now, we had so much cash flowing through the door. You didn't miss it. Hate to say it, quote unquote, we didn't miss that money. Because there was so much and the challenge again was to use it wisely. And those funds were spent through the 1970s. And then something else happened. 71, the state adopted an income tax. And as a condition of passing the income tax, there was, a local government fund was created where that money, some of that money on a proportional basis was kicked back to various municipalities of the local governments. Well, unfortunately, in the 2000s, that local government fund went away. There's 18% of it left today. 18% of it's gone. And the state's income wisdom, is what concerns me now, the whole, eliminated the estate tax. Communities, Jackson Township, for example, built safety building with one estate tax from Louise Tenney. Imagine that? So the state is ratcheted down. Hoover left in 07, 08. We're in a very different situation financially today than we were 10, 15 years ago. So how do we sort this out? Well, one of the things we've done is, let me just come back to my notes here for a second. Again, I appreciate the comments. But I thought it was interesting because we had this remarkable economy of which you asked me for. Mr. Tender says, cut services. City of Rizaletti says, I don't want this if I'm replacing it. How do we find that balance? What does it look like? Well, one of the things we've done and we've worked very hard is that we can engage in a fair amount of economic development activity over the last six years. Now, the reality is at this desk, we're not so free. I can't plot a steel building down in the center of town. I can't put a buried factory on East Maple across from Walsh. We have what we have and unfortunately, it is coercion. GBA, QDB, Main Street, and all those areas. That's it. So we've been working very, very hard to make that happen. Nobody mentioned the terrific success of D-Bolt at the Hoover plant. We got them in to the warehouse. They just put a 12 or 15 million dollar expansion on the building. And we've got more D-Bolt folks coming in to occupy other sites on that campus. We're working hard. Myers up the way, we'll have some, we'll have some success up there in terms of jobs. But as somebody said, I get it. It's retail. It's coercion. I wish it was manufacturing. I wish it was an office building. But all you have to do is walk over to Jackson Township and look at the, look at the former GP Credit building and the thousand car parking lot that's empty. That's a fool's errand in this economy. I drove up Main Street today and there must have been a half a dozen signs for state office space in those buildings. That tells us something and I'll come back to that in a minute. Somebody said, hey, what about Hoover? Okay. West Valley. It's a dirty building. Do you see that? It can't be office. What's it gonna be? We don't know it. We're working with them. But I don't think you was Habsburg running on it. And I sure as heck don't think you want to become low income housing. Any hands for that? So we're stuck. We're working on it. But we're trying to make things happen, but we don't know it. And we're present under circumstances. Now, in terms of solutions, let me just, just make sure I listen right over. The guy D-Bolt talked about this transition. Okay. So what is it we like about this place? What is it we like about living in North Canton? Safe, good services, streets we pave? I mean, if it wasn't, why would you be here? Recently, we priced out of it. But I gotta tell you, our costs are going up all the time. Just like every, your people live to. Chlorine at the water treatment plant, roads stalled. Our police department, over three years, it's probably go up between 17 and 20% just from the cops here. Want fewer cops? Fewer police? Is that what I'm hearing you say? Pardon me? Well, I'm just, I'm just saying there's a series of choices here. You know, we have, we have a, we have $380,000 worth of load letting that comes in. One, one letting, $380,000. Last year, this street that had 34 homes on it, excuse me, 32 homes, the cost to pave that street was $132,000. When you look at how much those property owners pay on that street letting, it's $114 on average a year. You can work the math. 32 times 114 gives you $3,648. That's what those property owners pay for a $130,000 project. Street needed to get done. And these are all over town. Our engineer, as we're talking about this, said, we should be paying, we have 55 miles of street. We should be paying it 5.5 miles over the year. We're doing one and a half. If Or was walking around, if he could walk, he'd tell you that Heatherwood, Lyndon, Castlewood, just maybe two streets of his ward, probably won't make it through the winter. They're gonna need to get done at some point. And that's just three streets. I just laid it out to give you some sense of the magnitude of the challenge that we have. Somebody said, what are you doing? It's okay. We've got a couple of choices. You can raise the property tax. It goes without. But you're gonna need multiple letting. You're gonna need one for police. You're gonna need one for roads. You're gonna need one for capital approvals. You're gonna need multiple lettings. It won't be just a bill. There are a couple of bills that go there.
Those are choices.
Okay. This is just a choice. I'm just laying it out. Please, it's your choice. Hold on. Hold on a second.
Are we allowed to knock?
No, it's not. Larry, Larry, you know the rules.
I know the rules.
Please, this is, this is, this is not stimulus. I have the mic. I'm trying to explain it. Because frankly, I think people can ruminate on this and get back to members of council. The second thing you can do is you can raise the income tax by vote. There are risks with raising the income tax. If you go to 2%, there is a really good possibility that you will drive the small businesses that are not fixed geographically to this community out.
You're wrong. You're wrong.
There's no power in anything you're saying. We can't have this. Let's, let's be civil. Let's be better. Take the light away, you're a panda.
I'm just trying to lay, I'm trying to lay this out here.
It's civil.
Okay. So the other element is.
We're gonna take a five minute recess. Let's get, let's get the progress. So I would ask that everybody listen as we listen to a new speaker. Allow us to, please, please allow us.
We can't have talking.
Wait, guys, guys. Wait, stop, stop.
Listen to me. We're taking a five minute recess. Everybody, act of the process and then return and speak. Okay, we're gonna reconvene after our break here. All right, I'm gonna make a motion to table ordinance 91-2023.
For full seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion taken. Okay, moving on. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance 92?
Go back to 85. Go back to 83.
Oh, we're going back to the inferior, I bet. Sorry. Sorry. I had my eyes that I looked this way. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance eighty dash one twenty-three?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to enter into a shared development agreement with the Jackson Township trustee.
Okay, this is the, uh... This is the third final reading of this shared development group of Jackson Township. Subject to legal carrier, we've got a meeting in Jackson Township. It reflects, uh... It refers to an area that we have created, uh... On the west edge of town, uh... Which is part of our long-term economic development and land banking. I do wish to correct one or add some additional color. The fact to, uh... Statement was made that, uh... We were simply giving away the real estate taxes. The fact of the matter is, the agreement requires the Jackson Township, at its cost, provide fire, emergency, medical service, police, street, roadmates, repair stormwater, drainage, parks, and recreation. So, there is a slot here. It's, uh, in terms of services for the tax. And, uh, as we indicated at our previous meetings, we believe that cooperating with Jackson Township in the past we did not. And it's firstly, their efforts to grow our economy. We believe that this step, uh, will produce faster, better economic development projects in scope. And these, by scope, will mean job count and capital investment. That's present.
To that point, to Daryl's point, this is one of those areas where working together to generate jobs, to generate income tax, is an idea that we put together with Jackson Township in a lot of negotiations. We'll end up a lot of time in it. But it's things that we're doing on this side to help with those tax dollars for the general public.
Absolutely. I think it should also be noted that I had an agreement with Jackson. We are avoiding a potential...
Gary, can you use the microphone?
I will use the microphone. Can you, um... Okay. I think it should also be noted that I have this agreement with Jackson Township. We also avoid a potentially protracted legal fight over the annexation. So, might have saved it there as well. So, all for this agreement. And it can be a model for our other, um, potential board of township board. So, that's it.
Motion to adopt, uh, third reading?
Oh, hold on one second. I just wanted to...
Okay. If you push a button on the bottom.
I just wanted to say, nothing's changed from my feelings than last time. This is a joint effort to develop a vacant property. There, there's nothing going on in that property right now. And to team with somebody like Jackson and potentially take this and use it as a model for other properties up and down that street is, is a monumental first step in doing that. Um, and also, maybe we can parlay this into working with, with Plank Township. The cost of litigation, the environment, the law. I, I invite you to look into it. It's, it's not, it's not a great play. It's very expensive and, and more and more, um, they're, they're siding for townships. There's, there's a lot of extra layers in, in putting together legal defenses against them. Very expensive, so I, I'm in full support of this.
You ready to go?
Yep.
Go for it.
Motion to adopt third reading ordinance eighty dash twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance eighty-two, or ninety-two dash twenty-three?
An ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds of the city of North Canton to be appropriated for current expenses during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, fine, yes, sir.
Okay, we talked about this last week, um, regarding the fire fund. Any more questions? All right, or none, I move to adopt.
Second.
Wait. We need an amendment for the fire grant.
I'm sorry, motion, second to amend ordinance ninety-two twenty-three to appropriate an additional six thousand to the fire fund program received by the department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion, second.
Yeah. Kind of a motion and a second to adopt the first reading of ordinance ninety-two dash twenty-three as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And kind of a motion and a second to suspend council rules requiring three readings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, can I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance ninety-two dash twenty-three under suspension of the rules?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance ninety-three dash twenty-three?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to enter into an agreement with the North Canton Community Improvement Corporation for the conveyance of real property known as parts of Outlot two-seven-four and Outlot two-seven-three in the city of North Canton, Stark County, parcel number nine-two-zero-eight-four-four-five, from the city to the North Canton Community Improvement Corporation.
Fine, yes, sir.
Okay, we're just moving that property around to the CIC. Patrick, does anyone want to say about this?
No.
Okay, and move to adopt.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance ninety-four dash twenty-three?
An ordinance amending chapter one-nine-two income tax of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton in order to ensure compliance with changes in state law.
Fine, yes, sir.
Okay, last week we talked about this, uh, and our prime instructor proposed some of the changes in the thousand-page report. Um, and any other changes that we need to be aware of? We're good, okay, and move to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance ninety-five dash twenty-three?
An ordinance authorizing the director of finance of the city of North Canton to make final appropriation amendments for current expenses and related one-time advances and or permanent transfers of monies made to various funds needed during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and within the available resources in order to balance and close the fiscal year.
Fine, yes, sir.
Okay, this is where we're making the final appropriations for our twenty-twenty-one year in order to balance and close the fiscal year. Any more comments or thoughts? Nothing new, okay, I'll move to adopt.
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Ben, would you please read the title of ninety-six dash twenty-three?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an extension agreement in the collective bargaining process by and between the city of North Canton and Fraternal Order of Police of Ohio Labor Corps Incorporated, police, lieutenants, and sergeants, the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association patrolmen, and/or the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association full-time dispatchers slash lead dispatcher, if negotiations continue past December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, and result in a mediation conducted by the Ohio State Employment Relations Board, SER.
All right, personnel, Dave. So this is a precautionary measure.
This is a precautionary measure. So that if, for some reason, they don't finalize negotiations with the police department, and the mayor has mentioned that the mayor can continue with what the current contract states. So, only if this, if they're not reaching agreement, will this go into effect.
Questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance ninety-six twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Ben, would you please read the title of ordinance ninety-seven dash twenty-three?
An ordinance authorizing the vacation of a portion of Ashland Street Southwest from the west right-of-way of Ambler Avenue Southwest to the west line of parcel number nine-two-zero-eight-six-two-two-five within the corporate limits of the city of North Canton.
Okay, this is street and alley, this is my committee. Uh, so this is a vacation, an alley that was used as a private driveway. Uh, both parties have signed the vacation agreement. Uh, there's nothing new since, since last time. A very admirable move that we adopted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Uh, moving on to department reports. Uh, start with the director of administration.
Just would, uh, like to make the council aware that, uh, the city of North Canton was, uh, just yesterday selected as the third-best retirement community in Ohio, up from seven. Up here.
Moving forward. That's awesome. Director of budgets?
I'm gonna stop that.
You can repeat it. Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. And, uh... Thank you for, for being here and listening to all of you tonight. And... On Saturday, November eleventh, was a very special day for our country and for our military service personnel and our board. And that is a veterans' day. And if you're a veteran, would you please stand up and be recognized in our audience? And thank you very much. There's a lot to write about tonight and a lot to listen to. And I appreciate that. And, uh, I've had the opportunity to live and work in this community for over forty years. I've lived in it, I've lived in it. I had the privilege to protect it. And it's something that I took very, very seriously. And I tried to do the best job I could. And now... Being a part-time mayor has been a little bit of a challenge. But, uh, I've always given it my full-time commitment. And I understand that this is a emotional issue. And it's something that is, could be very impactful for all of us. And I have taken that, as you have shared with me. Uh, I have internalized that, and I understand that. I almost forgot what I was gonna say, thinking about it. We heard some good options tonight, which is, I appreciate that. Things that we need to think about more. When I decided to go and run for mayor back in twenty-nineteen, I know that I felt there were some things that we needed to improve. And, uh, we've been able to accomplish quite a few things in trying to purchase lands, prevent your business, improve our income tax, protect our city, keep it safe. I've always been one for microeducation. Uh, like many of you, I've always voted for, that's what I learned from my parents, to support the strong community, uh, lives on a strong educational system. The decisions I've tried to make in working with the city council and the city administration, I've always tried to work on the last thing, do something for the greater good of our community. And I learned very early in office, you can't use everybody. And I understand that completely. And I'm not trying to make light of it, and please understand that. But, uh, my heart is in this community. I want it to succeed. I want our children to be safe. I want your grandchildren to have an opportunity to grow and live here also. So I do appreciate what you've said. I listened. You've provided some options. And I think it's something that we need to go back and internalize and think about. What's going to be the best for our community? And, and, and helping to move forward. Uh, I think about, you know, what are we doing today to protect the future of this world? Where are we going to be in twenty, twenty-five years? How are we gonna maintain, how, uh, our city to be sustainable? And that covers a lot of areas. And you've talked about some of those things right now. So, I just want to say, thank you very much. And that, uh, it really is still, uh, I know some people, uh, hold on one moment. They, uh, may not think, uh, that much of the mayor. Uh, and I think that, okay, but it's not about me, all right? It's about our city. And that's the goal, uh, to make our city better. And, uh, I thank you for your input. And again, the decisions we make are trying to be made for the greater good of the community. And, uh, I've heard from you tonight, and I appreciate that. So, with that, uh, I'll be around. If you wanna, uh, talk to me, that's fine. I'll be here for you. Uh, if we pass the call, or, or, excuse me, the right of following to the next, please be prepared. Thank you.
No more, no report, all right? Well, I'll just start, and we'll pass it down this way, if that's okay, everybody. Um, thank you for all coming out. Um, thank you for being civil. Uh, your voices were heard, so we tabled it. Um, the, the next thing I'll challenge you with, though, inaction is not... It's, it's just not an option. We, we need to do something. Uh, you guys were, spoke, and everybody heard you. There, there's obviously some sort of compromise that we need to do. So, um, I invite you to open your minds and think about property tax, um, and think about other avenues that, that we need to go down to address the services that, that our city provides. Um, there, there's gonna be no change in the way that Ohio funds us. Uh, I mean, unfortunately, the, the infrastructure burden is, is put on us. It's, it's taken down from three-point-six-eight percent in two thousand and eleven to one-point-six-six percent today. Um, and we all know that through inflation and what we're feeling right now, those, those levels aren't comparable. I mean, we're, we're working with, with, with dollars from, from twelve years ago. Um, I invite you to write, write your state senators. Um, I invite, I invite you to, um, think outside of the box because we, we do, we do need some sort of resolution. Uh, but I thank you for your voices tonight. That's it.
Um, yes, thank you for all coming and sharing. And I think you did have some actionable items. You talked about different ways that we could fund, and you were all supportive. You, many of you said, "I'll pay a higher rate of tax, I'll look at property taxes." Um, I supported you in the past, and I don't want people to leave based on this. I think what I heard most is that, as residents, you wanna pick the level of government that you decide on. And we heard you, and I think it's important that you get a vote in what you decide. Thank you all for your thought comments tonight. Really appreciate everyone coming out. Um, this is what we're here for. I guess I'm gonna say, as I was thinking about this, repealing reciprocity, I thought about, so number one, it would not affect me, um, because I do work in North Canton. But I thought about it as a big wood, right? I am a single mom. I had cancer a year ago, drained my savings account. Um, I work nonprofit, and that, it doesn't matter, none of this matters about me. But I felt like, okay, could I pay an extra seventy dollars a month? Would I be able to do that? I want you guys to know, we did think, or at least I did think through this. And I'm like, yes, I'll have to cut some things, but I would be able to do it. And it felt like, is this the solution to, you know, are we, we can pull this way? We can do community athletic fields this way? We could do things and provide what the community is looking for and asking us to do? And is it the easy way? Yes, the easier way, for sure. Um, it's gonna give us the money immediately, and we'll be able to do those things. But we hear you. Um, and so I appreciate you coming out and saying, you know, will we have to cut things if we don't do this? Maybe. Um, we're not gonna tell the police, I can tell you that. Are we gonna cut, um, half a million dollars for community athletic fields? Maybe, I don't know. But, I guess, there, as Stephanie said, there, we have to do something. So, we appreciate, I do, like she said as well, appreciate that you also can be willing to support funding things in other ways. And we will come back to this, so, thank you.
I want to thank each and every one of you who spoke this evening, especially the ones who are still here and sticking it out to the bitter end at nine-twenty-four P.M. So, uh, thank you. So, uh, thank you, we heard you. Um, my heart goes out to, and I think she'd love to go put her case to bed, she said, a single mother. I, I, I hear what you, what you're saying, I understand, and I'm listening to what you guys have to say. I, over the past week, I have, haven't gone a day without thinking about this. I put myself in the place of a single mother as much as I could, put my place in, someone placed in a single mother, I put myself in, uh, in that position, thinking about what it would be like. And I appreciate all the comments you've raised. Um, kind of what's gonna be understood, that... I, I appreciate the comments, and I hope to have conservative criticism going forward. I thank those who called, I, and sent messages, and, I'm sorry, Marshall, we're not able to connect, but that's already been added to the meeting, but I genuinely do appreciate the comments, but especially the conservative criticism going forward, because, uh, it is something that will still need to be addressed, and hopefully not be done so without the, um, the import of citizens, and especially those here in this room. So, thank you so very much for your dedication and letting me bring along for additional two minutes. It is now nine-twenty-six P M, thank you for sticking it out, so, thank you. I've already burned my time for the evening. But I want to thank everyone for coming this evening and providing us with input. I would always say that I, over the years, have said this, part of the challenge that all of us have up here, outside of your view, is before-looking, trying to anticipate what this community needs tomorrow, next year, and five years down the road. It's not always easy, uh, we try to do the best we can. Thank you for your input, and I'm sure you'll be here for this crew again.
Again, I agree with everything that's been said, I wanna thank you all for coming out. We do meet on most Mondays, and I'd like to have more meetings in here with this amount of people. So I challenge you to come back to council and pay us a visit, you know? Again, I thought we were hurrying out too, too many things, if you listen to me, you're a real table. So, um, I do what my constituents want, many of my constituents showed up tonight and spoke, so thank them and thank all of you for coming.
Got something to wrap up? I too thank everybody for coming out, your voice needs to be heard. The other side of that is, is the respect that we have for our neighbors and everybody that we live with. And we're here, we're there, you can reach out to us, you can call us, you can email us, you can talk to us, and say that. But we need to keep that respect, these meetings are important for our community. And I've asked that we communicate that perspective, I don't think I can say it any other way. There are some hard decisions that need to be made, both ways. There's gonna be pain that everybody's gonna feel, their services may need to be changed, there needs to be a way to find balance here. And that balance comes with communication, and with talking, and really digging deep. So, reach out, let us know what you think, over and above at the same time, so we can move to the future without just picking the can down the road or leaving the burden for those that follow us. Thank you.
Jim? I'm not a councilwoman, yeah?
You too, everybody.
No.
Uh, final call for new business. Okay, um, moving on. Uh, meetings calendar, uh, we'll have a regular city council meeting on November twentieth. Uh, on the twenty-seventh, we'll have a public hearing on ordinance sixty-nine dash twenty-three. Uh, we also will have a regular city council meeting, and December first, we'll have the organizational meeting. Moving on to executive session. Can I have a motion and a second to enter in an executive session to consider confidential information related to requests for economic development assistance under O R C section five-seven-zero-nine forty to five-seven-zero-nine forty-three, as permitted by O R C one-twenty-one twenty-two G eight? Uh, have a roll call, well, after this, moving on to the second.
Does roll call move second?
All in favor, and that's gonna be roll call for this.
Number Schroyer?
Yes.
Number Warren?
Yes.
Number Wyre?
Yes.
Number McLeister?
Yes.
Number Revolt?
Yes.
Number Orr?
Yes.
Number Mathie?
Yes.
Seven in favor, unanimous.
Okay. We are now in the executive session.